It is the allotted time of the fourth month of 2023, that being April, and it is my distinct pleasure to call your Hanover Borough Council April meeting to order. I'm going to first request that you all stand and recite in unison our wonderful Pledge of Legions, and we'll follow that with a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Legions is required.
In the United States of America, and in this republic for which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and please be seated. With the able assistance of Secretary Felix, let's call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
That's you.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg? Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Mr. Rickart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Shultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman? Secretary Felix, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll start by announcing that council did participate in an executive session this evening, and I'll refer to our solicitor to tell you why. Thank you.
So from 6:30 to 7 o'clock tonight, council met in executive session to discuss matters involving the employment of a current borough employee, to consult with the solicitor regarding matters on which identifiable complaints may be filed, and to review other agency business which would otherwise violate a lawful privilege under Section 708A, 1, 4, and 5.
Thank you, Solicitor Shultis. At this time, I will open it up for public comment. We will start in the room. Name sheets, pre-sign these.
I don't know.
Oh, sorry. I didn't get them. Gracious. Looks like Ivan Franz is up first. Yes, sir. Come forward. You're welcome to sit at the table and tell us who you are and your address, and then the nature of your remarks.
Good evening. My name is Ivan Franz. I am president of the Lyric Band of Hanover. The band has its own building here at 20 York Street in the rear of the property. I'm here to address basically two things this evening. Number one is the municipal parking lot that is located next to our building off of York Street. I know that you recently increased the rates for parking, and our Friday night bingo patrons have complained about that, and I have told them you got off lucky for many years compared to York and Gettysburg. Parking is what it is everywhere else now.
Thank you very much for that.
But because the parking rates have increased, we've also heard comments some of the lighting in that parking lot is not working and has not worked for some time. It makes the parking lot very dark in the evening, especially after our bingo games are done on Friday night for people to see in the parking lot to get to their cars. And also, the paving in the parking lot is in terrible shape and has been for some time. As a matter of fact, in the last month, we have had two bingo patrons fall, leaving the bingo games on a Friday night in the parking lot. And we have explained to our bingo patrons that if they fall in the parking lot, it is borough property. It is not our property. The borough is liable for that. I don't want to see anybody else fall. I don't want to see the borough face a lawsuit from our bingo patrons. The lights should be fixed, and something should be done about the paving. So that nobody else falls.
What's the specific address of this?
What?
What's the specific address of this parking lot? Do you know about?
Well, the address of our building is 20 York Street, and we're at the rear of the property. The parking lot is right next to our building on the north side. Okay?
Thank you.
And the other thing is, we recently installed an ADA handicapped accessible ramp to get to the second floor of our building, which is over 100 years old. Okay? And the property owner in front along York Street, which was Cell's notary service, they closed up. Another notary service was in there for a short period of time and then closed. And there's a vape shop in front. They have two dedicated parking spaces next to the rear of that building. And we have talked with the owner of that building. He is amenable to having those two parking spaces moved if the borough would move those two spots and then take the space that is closest to the building, take that parking bumper away so the sidewalk in front of our building could be easily handicapped accessible for somebody in a wheelchair so that they could use the ramp to get into our building. That's the other issue. We would like to be fully ADA compliant, since we spent $30,000 to build that new ramp. We still have some concrete work to do to the sidewalk to make sure that we meet ADA requirements, and I'm right now trying to find a contractor that can do that for us. But I don't know really who to talk to about possibly moving those parking spaces and getting that one opened up so that our sidewalk and the ramp would be handicapped accessible directly from the parking lot.
I'm going to encourage you to come in and talk to staff. Schedule a meeting. I mean, that's where this fix that you're asking for is going to originate.
Okay.
We're not parking designers here.
Right.
We'll say yes to things once staff puts together a program for us. So Manager Lewis, I'm sure, is taking notes. I'm taking notes and making an appointment and come in and maybe roll our sleeves up and start to look at some of these things for you.
Okay.
Okay.
But those are my two concerns, especially about the lighting and the condition of the parking lot. I don't want to see anybody else fall.
No one does.
And I mean, our bingo patrons, on average, are not young people, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have Tammy Gobrecht. Can't imagine.
Well, good evening. I think most of you know me by now. Tammy Gobrecht, I live at 717 Ash Drive. And I'm here to talk about the Cherry Tree 5 development. I've mentioned a few times before that I don't think this development conforms to our neighborhood. And tonight, I pulled out some of the ordinances that I think that it violates. So do you want me to give you those to you? So, okay?
I mean, you can, do you have a paper copy you can leave for us?
I can leave you my copy if you want. I kind of circled them. I don't have mine. Yeah. And I just wanted to make clear, too. This is what Eric told me, the plan, the salvo plan, that this was, I guess, placed under. There's two salvo plans, the old one and the new one. And since this was filed under the old one, that is what this would go by. Okay. So it's number 140-905, Special Exemption Procedures. Again, I'll leave this for you. It's page 112. The line item is D. And it talks about criteria for approval. Number E and F, it talks about the neighborhood and what it has to be in, no significant impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Now, it does address noise, dusk, odor, vibration, light, hours of operation, or other disturbances. I think it does. I mean, you go from a field to apartments. Definitely going to be some kind of disturbance there. The second is the design. And it mentions, just to summarize, a harmonious relationship of buildings and grounds to the adjacent buildings and grounds. You know, how do you go from a decent 2,000, 3,000-square-foot house to a 600 or 700-square-foot apartment buildings and have that harmonious? So what, the second part is two pages later, under item E. Again, E and F, same things. So I'll leave that for you. You know, if somehow the contesting of the zoning hearing, if that doesn't come to fruition from what the attorney came up with, we have gotten our part into the judge. So I'm hoping that we'll hear a hearing or a decision shortly. If that doesn't go through, you know, we're going to look at planning, be at the planning meetings to bring up these things. You know, certainly talk about what kind of setbacks we would like to see if it would continue to go through. And then lastly, this is what I'm looking to you guys for, to say, look, this doesn't meet the zoning. We're going to overrule that. So I just want to give you some, you know, some information. Start looking at it. And if you think I'm totally wrong, tell me, and we'll move forward.
Okay.
Okay? Do you mind if I come up and give it to you?
Yep, please.
Thank you very much.
Well, I wanted to bring some, some actual, you know, I've been talking a lot. I wanted to show you where I think it affects the zoning. So thank you for listening.
Yep. I guess we have Aldry Coppersmith.
Bill, before we go any further?
Yeah.
Could we have Tammy's papers? And what she's, specifically what she's talking about, you know, to give it to us in a nutshell? Could you send that to us over on our computers so that we could see?
I think we'll put something together here.
You know, short, you know, brief on what she's specifically talking about.
Right.
Thank you.
I will print it out in a part that contains it rather than printing out the other 100 and some pages.
Did you, I'll circle back to you afterwards.
No problem. Take your time. No worries.
Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Audrey Coppersmith. Most of you know me already from testifying Cherry Tree 5. In addition to Tammy Gobrecht, I live at 412 Osage Drive. And I'm going to pick up where I left off, I guess, last Wednesday with the meeting where I showed some maps having to do with stormwater management. I did some actually additional investigating, as well as some updated pictures that would give you a better idea of exactly what we're talking about and where it's located. So first of all, I started, and I'll be more than happy to share these pictures with, you know, people in the borough and so forth. I didn't bring copies for everyone, but I'll be, I have them on digital. I took pictures of the maps that I did so that if that would be helpful for you to see, I'll be more than happy to send them. Someone can just let me know who to send them to, and you can distribute them. The map I shared last Wednesday dealt with, this came from the stormwater management. It had to do with the hotspots that are already designated as concerns for the Hanover Borough, and how it relates to Cherry Tree and the adjoining properties, as Tammy was talking about as well. In addition to that, you also have a church up here. Actually, you have two churches that adjoin the property. Calvary Bible Church, along with the Matthias Center, and Shepherd's Full Daycare, abut the property directly. And I'll show you some more specific pictures of that, along with how it fits for the Cherry Tree development, the York Trail, which could be basically eliminated if he gets his development in there, puts the road in there. And I'll also share with you some updated, as far as that flood zone specifically of this hotspot. First off, having to deal with the flooding hotspot. This is an up-close picture with the telephone poles that are already, or I should say, or utility poles that are already showing wear and tear from the water damage that even just a small rain does just in the area where the water comes up to that area, and it flows back towards our community, as you can see in the cherry tree, where I have the arrows here. You also have the rail trail here. If a road goes in right next to it and into the flood area, that's clearly going to cause a ridiculous, you know, with that impervious surface, it's going to cause additional flooding. So therefore, not only is the development, but also putting a road in there. Plus, it's going to destroy the trail, which Hanover Trolley Trail, or actually York Rail Trail, is working really, really hard to increase the foot traffic between Hanover and York. And they're actually focusing on the Hanover section. And obviously, if this development goes through, that would be, you know, eliminated at this point because of having traffic on both sides of it. A little bit more up close and personal is where you have the wetlands. You have the arrow that goes back to our community. Our community abuts that rail trail. So we're right at the back of it. We're Cherry Tree 4. So if that flooding water is coming down towards us, and ours out of our stormwater management, which hasn't even been finished yet from our development, comes the other way, Hanover, or the borough is actually going to be dealing with a whole lot of flooding property right in the middle because they own the property right in the middle, the woods and the surrounding area. So.
Audrey, you're talking about the natural habitat?
Yes, the natural habitat, where the wetlands are. And then you have the flooding area. And again, you can see an up-close picture of, this is on a dry day. This was actually just, this one was actually on Monday that I took this picture. So this was a couple days after the rain, and you can still see.
Aldry, do you have other general remarks other than stormwater?
Yes, I do.
Pictures? Okay, if you could start segueing.
Sure, okay, no problem.
One picture is a thousand words.
Yeah, okay. All right. Then as far as just where the Cherry Tree development is, I want to show what the adjoining properties are with Cherry Tree, sorry, Cherry Tree 5 being right next to Matthias Center, which happens to be, as well as a daycare that is there. So literally, they are the adjoining properties. And clearly, you can see from the land there and from the daycare and all those children that are out there playing, which I was out there yesterday. All those kids are out there playing. If you have a development which actually has a trail, believe it or not, right off of the Cherry Tree property, there are actually, there's a small fence, and then there's actually a dirt trail that comes right up to Matthias Center and to the daycare. That's endangering all of those kids that are out there playing, as well as the staff, you know, that is there trying to take care of those kids in the community. So that's a real, you know, issue in addition, and it's a safety issue. So my concern is, when I talked with the leadership at Calvary Bible, they thought it was actually the other church's property that we were talking about. And so I shared it with them even last night and sent the emails to them. And they're looking into how it definitely affects them because it is the adjoining property.
Have you asked them to come and voice that to us, or?
I am, I am in the works of that.
Several times, you mentioned talking to people that.
Yeah, well, no, I just talked to the leadership, and I sent, and I'm waiting for a comment back to see what they're going to do to come and then, you know, share.
Voice them to, yes.
Correct. So, you know, like I said, I am definitely in opposition. And I'd also like, at this time, for those people that are here with me, many of them from the Cherry Tree 4 community that are here in opposition to please stand.
Should I stand, too?
Yeah, as well as the, as well as the adjacent properties. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tammy. My bad.
And we will get more neighbors here.
Yes. And we are working on getting more neighbors here as well because there is definitely a concern for this and what it's going to do to our community as well.
Thank you, Aldry.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. We have Robert Holt. Don't have a nature, okay, of your comment, so. Name and address, Bob.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your hard work. Robert Holt, PO Box 1131, Hanover. I'm in the third ward. I want to thank you, Mr. Rickert, Mr. Chairman, for your no vote on the Shepherd Myers Dam Project Change Order, number 6.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the rest of the council to vote no. I would also ask that in the future, when such issues come before the council, in the name of transparency and the public be able to understand that the name of the company and the amount of the change order, the amount of the money involved be listed in the agenda. And I would also, on another subject, in light of the fact that at the finance workshop meeting on April 19th, it was discussed that the borough does not have an employee handbook spelled out for employees. And that raises the question, as I look at some of the recent hirings and creation of jobs, is if there is a hiring policy or if there's a hiring handbook. I mean, I don't want to single anybody out, but I look at that communications manager position, and it appears from the discussion at the last meeting, the person to be employed is already picked out before the position was created. And I'm just wondering, is the position going to be advertised? Is it going to be offered to other borough employees? And I think, you know, maybe it would be nice to know if there is a hiring policy and what that policy is. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, even though I don't live in that neighborhood, I don't live in that ward, I'm going to voice my support with the people in the Cherry Tree 4 and 5 development. I have, many times, after I've heard discussions at this council board about various properties and various spots and flooding zones, I've walked or driven out to those sites and looked at them. I'm relatively new. I don't know everything. But I'm trying to get an understanding of the lay of the land and what's going on here. I think people, you all try hard. There's tough decisions to be made. But when I look at Cherry Tree 4 and see some of the things, it doesn't make sense. And I think there maybe has to be some consideration of ensuring that what happens involving Cherry Tree 5, that there is a rigorous and thorough review of the planning and zoning requirements, sewer requirements, things like that, that they should be rigorously enforced or reviewed to ensure that what happened in, what's happening in Cherry Tree 4 is not going to happen in Cherry Tree 5. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wish you all good evening.
I'm going to ask for community media's assistance to help us open up to online and electronic media communications. If you're joining us via Zoom, you're welcome to unmute your microphone if you'd like to address council. No one? Okay, we'll close the electronic communication and the overall public comment portion. Question for community media. Do we have Counselor Hagberg on with us? I can tell. Okay, okay. All righty, so public comment is closed. We will move into the printed agenda, first item being the consent items. Item 7, Chair requests a motion.
Sue motion.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It's an agenda passes. Flipping to page 2, we'll move into council workshop, finance, and personnel. Mr. Rowland.
Item 1, consideration of a motion to approve the amendment to the Askey White Labor Contract for the addition of the library personnel.
Second that motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay? Motion carries.
Item 2, consideration of a motion to approve the designation of position for a communications manager.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 3, consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Ryan Banker as the interim library director as with a stipend of $1,000 per month in addition to his additional, or his existing compensation until the position is filled.
Sue motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4, consideration of a motion to approve the designation of a position for an alternate right-to-know officer.
Sue motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5, consideration of a motion to approve the formation of an employee safety committee.
Second. All in favor of that one?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to add my commentary to that, that I think that's a great move. And I thank all that, all those that are involved with that because it's, well, it's an important item to be, to be working on. Item 6, consideration to authorize the solicitor to send correspondence to Mr. Ricky Hoak.
Sue motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1368, amending the salary of the borough electrician.
Sue. Okay.
Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
President Rickart, I appreciate your consideration of these motions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your making them. We will move into governance and policy. Dr. Rupp?
Thank you, President Rickart. I would ask for consideration of a motion to approve the borough of Hanover cell phone policy.
Sue motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. As we move into water resources, those of you following along, it has my name for the motion. I am not in favor of the motion. In fact, I think it needs to be re-discussed at the next council finance and workshop. So if anyone feels so inclined, I will take a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table it, then.
Is there a second?
Second. Got it.
Okay, all in favor of tabling that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, thank you, Bill.
Motion carries. Thank you. So we'll put that on finance for next month. Moving into planning commission without Mr. Hagberg. Mr. Kress, you're pin-shooting tonight.
Consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1366 for conditional approval of the 460, 470 High Street preliminary and final land development plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kress. We will move into public safety. Mr. Lockard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Request consideration of a motion to approve ordinance number 2340, eliminating parking on the west side of East Chesna Street from Railroad Street to the first alley north of and parallel to Railroad Street.
Sue motion.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call. So Secretary Felix, the floor is yours.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Rickart?
Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
The motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
May I just add a comment to that? In the future, could we have some sort of a diagram or visual map for things like that so we're all able to understand it better? And I know we have discussed it in the past, so I don't, I don't need to.
I thought I had a picture of it in there.
Yeah, we had one built.
Okay. There was a picture, yeah.
There was one, okay. Well, then I.
Counselor Lockard?
I missed that. I apologize.
Floor is yours, sir.
Okay. Request consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of ordinance number 2341, adopting rules and regulations for dumpsters and portable storage units.
Sue motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Again, Secretary Felix will execute a roll call. It's been moved and seconded. Again, Secretary Felix will execute a roll call.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Rickart?
Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spunk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes. Request consideration of a motion to approve the filing of a complaint in equity against the owner of 206 York Street, seeking court approval for the borough to enter the property to remedy the public health and safety issues.
So motion.
So move.
Yeah.
Never mind, I'll act off of that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
I should abstain.
You're abstaining, Council Rowland?
Thank you.
Uh, any noes? Motion passes with one.
You have to give a reason.
You're standing.
Perhaps.
I abstain because I own 204.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council Lockard?
No, it's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. We will go to page 3, and that will bring us to public works and facilities. The distinguished, Council Kress, at the end.
Number 1, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1367, authorizing sale of surplus borough equipment at online municipal bid auction.
So motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number 2, consideration of a motion to approve the designation of proceeds from the online equipment sale towards purchase of a replacement backhoe not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number 3, consideration of a motion to approve the revised vehicle leasing amortization repayment schedule for various equipment ordered during 2021 and deferred to 2022 and 2023 due to COVID setbacks.
So motion.
All in favor, give us an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay? Motion carries.
That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, I don't see a mayor, so I'm going to say there's no mayor's report tonight. Maybe she'll double up next month and we'll get to hear extra. Um, that will take us into public comment, phase 2, the last. Isaac, come forward.
Sorry, I have an other meeting. You set my timer right now. I won't take too much time, I promise. Give me your name and address. Hi, my name's Isaac Riston. I'm at 227 Locust Street. Sorry, uh, like I said, I was at other meetings, so got here a bit late, but nonetheless. The paper that I'm, uh, that Margie is so thankfully passing out is, I mentioned this last week, um, part of the Pennsylvania State Association, Borough Association, mentioned the, uh, recorded history of court cases filing in favor of burrows for having a rental registration inspection ordinance. And so one of the homework of that program was to submit that. And so what I did was I took all 26 court cases going back to 1955, in which burrows and townships have that authority. Um, additionally, what I wanted to point out really quickly was two things. First, the 26th one you see was from this year of March. That is on a House Rule City in Pittsburgh and does not apply to us. Uh, they actually found that home rule cities cannot have rental inspections, uh, because businesses on the state level do not have that clause. So for that reason, they're unable to do so by the Commonwealth Court. It was, you know, but I wanted to include that because having a full picture for the entire state, I think, is important. Uh, furthermore, um, the enabling authority is something we talked about in November, saying you don't have the authority to do so. That's not true. As a borough, you have the police power, right? This is a civil concept in which you, as a government, have the, as entity, need to promote public health, morals, safety and welfare. And as a municipality, I'm sorry, municipality government, that is your focus, and that has been a focus for a long time, right? So as a recommendation, one of the things they told, they said was how to draft an ordinance such as this. Um, looking at a proposed ordinance back in November, uh, we don't have our enabling authority at the top, so I recommend you have that in there. So that way, if someone brings up a question saying, how are you able to do this, you can simply point to that, as well as the common power that burrows have. We have a lot of power as a borough, um, so making sure that's included in the ordinance, I think, would hopefully clear up confusion in the future. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room with a public comment? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
This one does not involve any complaints, you'll be happy to hear.
We love, we love praise.
Okay, my name is Barbara Fisher, and I, I'm not a resident of the borough, but I am the treasurer for the Friends of the Library. And, and I have my colleague with me. She is the president-elect. She has not been sworn in yet, but she is going to be the, the new president of the Friends of the Library, replacing Sue Frye. Um, we just want to get established with you people, like we, we want to get the library more, you know, involved with the community, and we want to get the community more involved with the library. And so this happens to be National Library, Public Library Week, just, what a coincidence. But, uh, we just, we want to just make ourselves known to you, and we'd like to attend further meetings and see what you guys are up to. Um, we, we did have a successful book sale recently. We made over $8,000 for the library for that, and we have been selling books inside the library to, you know, routinely, not just part of the annual sale, and we're doing well with those things, too. So we're trying to help you guys, help the library, and just wanted to make ourselves known to you. This is, uh, I'm Barbara Fisher, and she's Barbara Hens, so she's.
Oh, Barbara and Barbara.
Yeah.
I'm just another Barbara. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Barbara. I already, I'm Clair Vorn, I got, I read your name.
As Barbara Fisher said, I am Barbara Hens. I will take the president of the Friends Organization in June, and, um, our goal is to raise funds, um, for the library and the borough. And I guess if you have any suggestions or anything, let us know. And I also did have a thank you card that is for the gentleman that had come over and moved all those boxes of books for our $8,000 book sale. So can I give that to you?
Give that to Manager Lewis, that'd be great. I'm sure she can figure out who it was.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, community media, anyone online or on telephonic communications?
If you're joining us via Zoom, can address council now if you'd like to.
Nope. Okay, we will close the final public comment portion, and I will move into announcing. We have a couple cancellations of committee meetings already for next month. Governance and public safety are canceled, and I chair Water and Sewer. I don't know if we have a lot on the agenda or enough on the agenda yet, and our engineer is out of the loop, so.
We have our stand-in.
We do?
Yes, Mr. Brinson, is there?
Is there an agenda, is there a meeting, Water and Sewer, this month?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, then why don't we, uh, we will announce that it has been canceled at this time as well, so. Okay, that will conclude everything we have to do tonight, so I will, uh, accept motions to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
We are adjourned despite Council Kress's one objection.